Welcome to the November the 6th, 2018 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, the invocation will be given by Pastor Tim Bayer of the Grace Episcopal Church. And following the invocation, we will have the flag salute. Pastor Tim.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we give you thanks this day on Election Day for the many freedoms we enjoy in our country. We ask your guidance to all of our leaders who will newly be elected. We also ask your guidance and your presence tonight at our City Council meeting. We give you thanks for our many leaders, our city employees, our police, our fires, our educators, and we thank you for this just fantastic community that we live in. We ask that you would be with us in our deliberations tonight and guide our council members and our mayor and help them to continue to help our town prosper and thrive in the city of Yukon. We give you thanks and lift up all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
McCarron.
Here.
Smysterla.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Kachini.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
This evening, we have a presentation to Mr. Mitch Hoskins, our retiring chief major, big dog, general guy of the year for the Police Department. So, Mr. Hoskins, would you come forward, please?
He's a major. We're going to get this straight here in about a week, folks. It gives me really great pleasure this evening for Mitch. I've known him for quite a while, actually, at least the last 10 to 12 years, and certainly he has served Yukon for a long time and has served us well. So, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas, Major Mitch Hoskins has served the Yukon Police Department for the past 25 years. And whereas, in his years of service to the city of Yukon, he has been very dedicated and has generously given up. It's time to protect and serve the residents of Yukon. And whereas, the Yukon City Council does hereby take this opportunity to extend its heartiest congratulations to Major Hoskins and express on behalf of its citizens a most sincere thank you for his dedication and service to the city and the community and extend our best wishes for his healthy, long, and enjoyable retirement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Yukon, the City Council of Yukon, gives special thanks to Major Mitch Hoskins for his many years of dedicated service by declaring Tuesday, November the 6th, 2018, to be Mitch Hoskins' Day in the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon on this sixth day of November, 2018. Well, since this is Mitch Hoskins' Day, I guess, Mr. Selby, did you give all the city employees off today? No, I would like to thank all the council members for everything you've done for the city. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Yukon and all the members of the Police Department. When I first started here, Chief Corrigan said that tested us too. I think we had 15 or 16 officers, and now we've got 15. It's been a good run, and I appreciate you all coming out. And it's time for the next chapter. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll now move into the visitors' section of the proceedings, and this is for visitors who would like to address the Yukon City Council on a non-agenda item. Do we have anyone here this evening who wishes to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none? Yes, sir. Okay. Come up, give us your name, address.
My name is Jacob Hanselman. I reside at 425 Branch Line Road. I would like to ask the city to have the chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. Taylor, write an open letter of apology for his behavior at the Planning Commission meeting where we went over the zoning. His behavior that day was disrespectful. It derailed the commentary that was going on in the discussions that we were trying to have. It was distractible, and he blatantly made rhetorical remarks and questions to the citizens that had concerns about things. He was not speaking from a citizen of concerns point of view. He was speaking from what should have been a, "I'm just here to hurry up and pass this vote, so please, just can everyone stop talking about what we need to do and pass this vote on?" He also, his tact and mannerisms were not becoming of the person that has that chair. And that's what I would like to address the council with.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will now address the Yukon, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council and convene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the Yukon Municipal Authority agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can approve those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 16th, 2018; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of $84,253.20. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Item 2A, consider and approve Resolution Number YMA 2018-05, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Yukon Municipal Authority 2018 Revenue Note, known as the Revenue Note, in favor of YNB in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $800,000 for the purchase of police vehicles and related equipment, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing said revenue note be sold at a price less than par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title 60, Oklahoma Statutes, Section 176, authorizing and approving documents, procedures, and payments related to the issuance of the Revenue Note, designated the Revenue Note as qualified for tax-exempt obligations as contained in the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, providing that the trust indenture shall be subject to the provisions of the Revenue Note ratifying a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract between the city of Yukon and the Yukon Municipal Authority, and by agreeing that item of the lease shall extend so long as the Revenue Note remains outstanding and unpaid. Is this where we read that, or the second part, item 11? Okay. All right. So, do I have a motion, please?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, sir. When you say waiving competitive bidding, that's legal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
It's what we normally do in a bond, like that.
Yes, the state has a contract that all cities can purchase off of, and that exempts it from being competitively bid if you buy it from the state's contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vote, please.
Yanda.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of October the 16th, 2018; B. Material claims in the amount of $526,777.71; C. Designated the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D. Extending the city's guarantee on the Yukon BMX loan through October the 23rd, which is Resolution 2017-03; and E. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November the 20th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item number 2 is reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Crosby, any reports to say?
No reports to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3, consider approving Ordinance 1372, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending Section 98-11 by providing for future increases in fees for residential and commercial removal and disposition of solid waste and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Crosby, you want to comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we previously approved a rate increase on all items as far as the golf cart, gallons of carts that we do, and the first dumpster, additional dumpster, but we did not place a raise on the four-yard, six-yard, and eight-yard containers that we put out the dumpsters, and this will address that problem.
Okay.
And why were they not included?
Because it was a era in staff. When you went back and looked at the item, if it's put in the code, it did not have the four, six, and eight yards in that. And so, it was prepared, there wasn't omitted, so we had to come back and add those.
So, basically, we're just increasing the rates on the four, six, and eight yard containers?
Right. That's correct, sir.
That is by request, then?
Right.
From the individual person? Okay. Do I have a motion, please? I think I already have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Selby.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 3A, consider approving the emergency clause of Ordinance 1372. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smysterla.
Yes.
Kachini.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Okay. I get to item 4, and this will start the series of items that deal with the Frisco Ridge area, and so I'm going to give a short note here. We'll be having a considerable amount of discussion this evening, on the agenda this evening. And consequently, each person will have an opportunity to present their concerns for three minutes, to make their concerns known. And if a person brings up a point, I would appreciate that subsequent speakers not belabor or reiterate the same point unless it's related to the conversation in another way. And that will, you know, certainly let everyone have an opportunity to speak. So, we're going to say, I'm going to start now with item 4. And consider approving Ordinance 1373, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 657, Appendix A, of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the northwest quarter of Section 19, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from R1, Single Family Residential, to C3, Restricted Commercial District, Frisco Commercial Tract 1, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Discussion from anyone who wishes now to get up and speak on this, and I have...
Mr. Mayor, I think the developer is here, and he may want to make a comment.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Excuse me.
And their engineer?
Yeah. I think it'd be good to start with that.
For an exhibit, Phil Hagan, Captain, Toll, and Associates, representing the applicant. The track in question for this item is the C3 tract, which was previously proposed to be C5. Through discussions with the city, we decided to pull back that zoning to C3 next to the entrance to Frisco Ridge.
Okay. Would you turn around and show everyone here in the audience that, for those who have...
So, the width of this zoning is...
Who have not seen it yet.
Approximately 350 feet from east to west.
Is this the zoning that the Planning Commission denied?
Yes. I can't remember which tract they denied, but yeah, this is one of the concerns where they didn't want to see a hotel or trucks up across from their entrance.
Right. That's right next to a park.
So, we downed the zoning for that section to C3.
With that being the only entrance currently into Frisco Ridge, what kind of protection or buffer would there be from the C3 zoning to the street that enters Frisco Ridge?
Just the standard setbacks and the commercial setbacks that are in the zoning codes.
Phil, what, excuse me, wasn't there an agreement that you would limit access to that property on the Frisco, the entrance to Frisco, to one entrance?
Yes, we'd be agreeable with that, yes. I wasn't a party to the meeting with the neighbors, but kept saying that that was an item agreed upon.
Yes, it was.
Yep.
Okay.
And on the last City Council meeting, the final plat for Phase 3 was approved, and we're beginning construction on that, and that will provide a secondary access to Frisco to Vannament. So, there will be two points out of Frisco Ridge.
What do you foresee, I know you don't know specifically, but foresee going in that area?
Yeah, it's speculative at this point. There's no plans. It's just getting it ready for, you know, there's been a drastic pattern change in traffic once this interchange and the improvements that are finished on Frisco and Vannament. So, we're just looking forward and anticipating, you know, this property being viable for commercial.
Under a C3, what could go in there?
Mitchell, maybe you'll answer that better than I can. I don't know the list of, it's, you know, C5, you can do more highway-type uses, hotels, car dealerships. C3 is more of a neighborhood-friendly commercial. But I don't know the specifics on what's in there.
Typically, a C3 is what we call our general commercial. It's the McDonald's, the Walmarts, the things like that, the strip centers. Okay. You know, I have quite a few folks here that want to speak, so we'll go through. Do you have a sheet up here, Mr. Jake?
They're going to speak to this particular zone.
Right. We're speaking to this one piece now, which is what has been changed from C5, or will be C3 rather than C5. So, yes, sir, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I'm a...
Name, address.
David Fowser. I live at 413 Swingman Road in Frisco Ridge. We moved into Frisco Ridge three and a half years ago because it's all residential, and we were planning on leaving our retirement there and our grandkids. And there's a playground right there inside Frisco Ridge, and now we're proposing to put other things right on the other side of the street from our playground. And our safety of our kids are at stake, our quietness of our community is at stake, and this is not what we bought into Frisco Ridge for. And we have a genuine concern that there's not enough buffer right there in that drawing. It just says that you're going to build right up next to our, our street coming into the subdivision. That is not safety for our kids, and that's not quietness for our community. And not everything has to be commercialized. Yukon is known for our residential communities, and that's why we retired here. That's why we moved here. And so, that's our concern, that there should be more of a buffer. In fact, where that prop, that C3 starts, right there, if you want to bring that up here, we're even thinking, this area here is all a buffer of trees.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's not a concern. That's great. But if we continued a tree line right off the end of that, that zone that went straight out to Highway 66, now that would be a buffer zone. But currently, there isn't any. C3 is not a buffer zone. C3 is building right up to our street and our playground and our community. So, that's our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did, Mr. Hagan, do you want to respond to that at all, or Tim?
Kip Ryan, I represent the developer. When we were at the last Planning Commission, we tried to listen to the concerns that came up, and the concerns we heard were, "We don't want hotels at that location." So, the decision and the, the thing we made, the decision we made at that time was to downzone at C3 because there was a talk more about the higher-density, high-type uses that they didn't want there. So, that was the attempt, is to try to hear what was taking place, and that was the reason for the downzoning to C3.
Okay. On that, if you'd clarify me, the entrance, once again, the entrance will not be on Frisco Drive coming in. It will be out on 66.
We will, we will have whatever the access allows on the state highway. In the world of development, we can do limits of no access, and we will limit, there's currently a curb cut there for a road or an entrance.
Yes.
We're planning on limiting that single access to that point.
Where's the curb cut?
It's already there.
So, so why couldn't a buffer be extended all the way to 66?
I'm not, I'm not... And so, there's a flood plain there. There's nothing that can be developed or built there, and so, the buffers on this area currently is a natural creek tree buffer. So, I don't know when he says if that was extended. I'm not sure how we, you know, they're 50-foot trees, so I'm not really sure how we achieve that. There was no discussions beyond that point. We just talked about, like I said, we heard a lot about hotels and those types of uses, and we tried to downzone to at least eliminate that type of concern or fear.
So, you can cut right off of this tree line with another set, let's say, three rows of trees. You go right out to 66, and then you would have a buffer. But right now, there's an entrance that was parked up the highway, and that's going to be the entrance into the C3, which is just a traffic zone. And we've got all this playground area and grandkids right here.
There also will be an entrance off 66, will there not?
Yeah, there will be an opportunity for an entrance off of 66.
It's 500 feet west, three quarters.
Right. That's right.
But we can allow for shared access to entrance points for the entire side.
But a tree line would act as a shut-off option, and that would be a barrier.
The Planning Commission approved all your other zone changes, but did not approve this one. Why would they, why are they not approving it?
C3 was not there at the time. It was all C5. They would not approve the entire C5, and so, what we listened to was, "We want a zone, a downzone." That was specifically said, "Why can't you make that C3?", and we did.
So, is, is the Planning Commission approved it now, that you've downzoned to C3?
No, we've appealed the, the ruling to the City Council.
Planning Commission did not vote on the C3 because it, yeah, it was not part of that original plan.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't go back to the Planning Commission now that they changed?
It was an accommodation from the developers to the folks out there so that they wouldn't put a hotel or anything of that nature in that, in that area, which was part of the original complaint.
My understanding is we could have appealed the C5 straight to the City Council as well without the change, correct? The denial?
You could, you could have, yes.
But none of the people at the Planning Commission meeting knew that this was going to be able, a C3 was going to be acceptable. It wasn't even discussed.
Well, it was mentioned as a suggestion.
So, we can discuss it again. We can't argue.
No.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to, we can't argue. We can just say how we arrived at this determination, and that's how we arrived at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Jacob Hanselman, 425 Branch Line Road. The concern that I have is that the appeal did not go through the Planning Commission, like was mentioned earlier. This appeal should go back to the Planning Commission so that residents in the area that are, have a better understanding and have the time to analyze and synthesize what they've done with the C3 and the C5 area. Also, the entrance that's cut away was cut away for the R1 that was proposed and originally platted for that area, and so, that cutoff should be curbed off as the only entrance into our neighborhood off of Route 66, and anything that enters into any commercial area should have its own entrance off of Route 66. We should, our neighborhood should not have to share the entrance of any businesses. And that's what they're proposing right now, is that we would share that entrance with that C3. Even though it has been downgraded to C3, our neighborhood would directly share... Even though it has been downgraded to C three, our neighborhood would directly share just that one entrance or the other entrances coming in on phase three once built. The other, the other thing about this is, is that there's no economy of scale added to what kind of public notice is sent out for these rezoning issues of things. So I don't technically live within three hundred feet of any of the property that they want to rezone, but it adds up to roughly hundred and fifty, two hundred acres of land that they're trying to rezone or more. And so a three hundred foot economy of scale notice to the public is not enough for this amount of land to be rezoned without a further public notice being sent out to people that are affected in more of a greater area. And my proposal is that they take this C three, this C five, that was all originally R one, back to the planning commission and let the city of Yukon members come and have a longer discussion and be able to look at and take a better view of and hear longer of what the appeal is. It should be appealed to the committee and not straight to the city council. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Scoach?
Yes, I'm Don Scoach, eighteen twenty-five West Highway sixty-six. And my land is directly north across the highway from this tract of land. And my biggest concern is the amount of runoff. We all know that north of sixty-six, there's always a major flooding problem. I've been before the council in previous years concerning, uh, the runoff from Westport Edition, the Westport sixty-sixth Edition and Frisco Ridge Edition. And we are constantly, I've lost like twenty-five acres of land that I can hardly, very seldom if ever farm because of the amount of, of water that's put on me. And you talk about retention ponds, and most of them are a joke. They're put where water doesn't even flow into them. And, uh, this natural creek, in fact, in this tract of land, I don't think there's any retention at all that I've seen. If they're talking about that, uh, that natural creek, about that, you know, concrete, you know, it's gonna let a lot of more water flow down that creek area than if it was like houses with yards or anything like that. So to me, it doesn't make much difference whether it's C three or C five. If you have concrete, you're gonna have a lot more runoff. And until that's, you know, addressed, I don't think you ought to allow, you know, allow the rezoning.
Thank you, sir. There actually has been several items discussed in regard to the runoff and other adaptations. You want to address that?
You want to have just general discussion about drainage?
Well, just the drainage, uh, Mr. Scoach immediately lives due north. That's where all that water runs underneath the highway into his immediate property.
Yeah, we've been working closely with city staff. I mean, city, Triad has been doing the improvements on Frisco and Vandement. And, uh, there's been, you know, right away giving back and forth. We've been working closely with them. We've actually already constructed the detention ponds for this, for the commercial as part of the city's project and our ongoing project. So the ponds are there. They're already constructed. We're ahead of the game on the detention.
Sir, you need to come with...
Yes, sir.
Please.
So is he saying that the runoff in this tract of land is gonna run uphill into the retention pond?
I don't think so.
I always thought water ran downhill.
There's a considerable amount of offsite drainage that's crossing this property. And we're able to capture that offsite drainage so that the net effect downstream is less than the historical runoff. So although what he's saying is true, that's not going in our ponds, but what's coming across the interstate and everything, we're capturing that water and then releasing it at a lower than historical rate.
Any further discussion on this item, Mr. Scoach?
I'm still content that off these fifty-six or some acres, there is no retention. All the retention they're talking about is further to the south. And there's, this is where the runoff's gonna be, right here. Some of it's captured, but I'd like someone to explain what they call historical amount. You know, is, uh, captured and then released and what, you know, precedent. I don't know where they get their, uh, figures from. All I know is, you know, when it rains, I know how the water runs and it's not being retained in any ma, uh, manner.
Mr. Williams, you want to talk about the historical runoff there?
Well, we have a drainage ordinance and, um, without getting into a lot of engineering, uh, I don't know what else you, you want from us. But we're able to calculate the difference when it's grass and then when it's concrete and determine the differential volume of runoff. And that's what we hold. And then from the pond, we release it at the historic rate that is considered the runoff. That's as simple as I can put it.
So there's nothing that can be done further north to keep the runoff from being excessive on that property?
Well, um...
We don't know exactly what's going there. Once we know what's going there, we can provide updated calculations to Robbie. And if further detentions required up north, we will, we will abide by the ordinance and provide an additional detention pond. But right now, we're not sure what's going in there. We've already, I think we have three ponds to the south. And if a fourth one's required, we will construct it. Commercial uses, it can vary quite a bit in the amount of concrete in the previous area that's added. You know, it may be something that has a lot of green area that we may already have enough detention. We just don't know yet until we have specific site plans. And that's the time when we provide calculations to Robbie and he reviews them.
Okay. Any other folks? Okay, make it very short, please.
So the differential volume that you're speaking of is going to run into the retention pond at the front of the neighborhood? Because that's the only retention pond that has any kind of differential volume that's captured from that creek and everything that's further south towards the forty. Correct?
I, I don't know if I understand your question.
Well, the associate with Craft and Toll just said that everything's gonna run into the existing retention pond and be set out at a low rate than historical value. So that only retention pond that's there now at the end of that creek to reduce or to let it out at the level that is lower than historical is the one retention pond that's at the front of Frisco Ridge. Because that's where all the water runs into that creek.
The one pond you're referring to in addition is designed only for the addition. So none of the commercial runoff will go into that pond. I mean, we have three ponds further south, and if we need to have a fourth pond on the north end, we'll have a fourth pond out of the, uh, the creek. We'll, we'll capture that water and discharge it into that natural drainage way upon development of that land. But right now, the only thing going into the existing pond within your addition is the runoff from the addition itself.
And this is why I feel like it needs to, I feel like it needs to be tabled and go back to the planning commission. This debate doesn't need to happen here, but in the planning commission, if we're gonna defer to their wisdom and discernment in the other ones, then I would, I move that we table it and let it go back to the planning commission.
Okay. Is that the form of a motion?
I don't know. Is it? Or is that what I do? I would like to make a motion that we table it and send it back to the planning commission for them to work out the particulars of this rather than bypassing the planning commission.
Correct motion, excuse me, would be to postpone it indefinitely until it's addressed by the...
Postpone it indefinitely until it's addressed by the planning commission and both parties can discuss it there.
I have a motion to postpone. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to postpone indefinitely. Any further discussion at this point on item four? Seeing none, vote please on the motion to table indefinitely.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smaestra? Caccini?
Yes.
Item four A is therefore moot. Item five. I don't have to do anything with that, do I?
Mr.?
Just moot. All right, item five, consider approving ordinance one three seven four and ordinance amending ordinance number six five seven appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by providing that the zoning designation for being part of tract of land situated within a portion of the northwest quarter of section nineteen, township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from R one, single residential district to C five commercial, uh, automotive and commercial recreation district, Frisco Commercial Track One and declaring an emergency.
Track two.
Do I have a motion?
You said track one. It's track two. It says track one.
It says track one.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion at this point on this item? From the council? Yes, sir, you come up and... Once again, point to the chart and show everyone.
Just for clarification, I want to show which track I believe we're talking about. It's the along Frisco minus the C three. It's the C five. And there is a hundred and twenty-five foot proposed buffer between that and the future phase three. So there's actually no existing houses that would be affected by this.
But that property has been planted, is that correct?
Has been planted and it's under construction, but there's no, no houses. So this is the track that you're...
All right, would you go ahead and show everyone in the audience that, please? Okay, is there any...
You're doing a hundred and twenty-five foot buffer? Is that what you said?
Yes, and that's where there's a, uh, a tree drainage way that is, it's a blue line on the quad map controlled by the Corps of Engineers. So we couldn't touch if we wanted to. It has to stay in a natural state. So it's pretty much a guarantee that it will be treed and left in a natural state.
Agenda item five is part of track one that was turned down by the planning commission originally, which subsequently leads to what was tabled for indefinite discussion to go back to the planning commission for item number four. I would ask that the, the city council do the same thing to this so that it can go back to the planning committee and all the citizens that are affected in this area have a longer discussion time to understand exactly what is gonna be going on in that larger an area.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion further? Anyone from the council?
I thought this one was passed by the planning commission. Was it not?
Track one was not...
Track one wasn't?
No. And that was because of the C three.
Not approved by the planning commission. There was one track one. Now you have two track ones. One's a C three, one's a C five. The original was all C five and the planning commission did not approve it.
So in this particular case, this now is track one and I guess the other one is track one prime or whatever it is for the C three portion that would be sent back. However, this is not a part of that at this time. Is that correct?
Because I understood the vote, Mr. Mayor, the C one that is, or the track one that is C three was what was referred back to the planning commission.
That's correct.
This track was not.
This track was not, so therefore we can handle it independently. Is that correct? Okay. All right, any other discussion from the...
So this one was passed, okay.
No, 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 no.
No. Okay. It's going from an R one to a C five?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the commercial development along Frisco Road. Okay. Any other further discussion from the council? Okay. Yes, sir?
Just one question. David Fowser, uh, four one three Swingman. If... I don't know exactly how to say it. There's two track ones.
Yes, sir.
One C three and one C five. If it goes back to the planning commission and C three is changed, that will also change track one.
Well, we've separated, we've separated them as two different...
These were separated on appeal to the council.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, but if it goes back to the planning commission and C three is changed, that will also change track C five.
It will not.
It will not, sir.
Okay.
No. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Vote, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
No.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Caccini?
Yes.
Item five A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance one three seven four. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Who's the second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
No.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaestra? Caccini?
Yes.
Item six, consider approving ordinance one three seven five and ordinance amending ordinance number six five seven appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter of section nineteen, township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in the Canadian County, Oklahoma be changed from C three, restricted commercial district and R three multi-family residential district to C five automotive, commercial, recreation district, Frisco Commercial Track Two and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, please. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Once again, I want to show where this is so everybody's clear on which track we're talking about. So this would be the track between the realigned Vandement and Frisco Road. This track here. Was approved by planning commission.
That's the little small track there. I want to show, show that to everyone on the other side there as well.
Jacob Hanselman, four two five Branch Line Road.
Thank you.
Track two is going to be completely adjacent to the realigned Vandement. On phase three of the approved, approved phase three of Frisco Ridge, there's going to be an entrance into our neighborhood coming straight off of this. So anything that's commercialized in through here will have access to Vandement and thus have access straight into our neighborhood. And it, to me, is going to, once the traffic speeds up from the turnabout being put in, that this is gonna become a mess of long roads that you have where people are going to try to cut through areas so they don't have to deal with the traffic at the stoplights. so they don't have to deal with the traffic at the stoplights or any of the other traffic assessments. So I don't know if a traffic engineer has come in and give the city recommendations on how they should handle these new intersections with stop signs, stop lights, yield signs or anything like that. But this is, this will lead directly into where the proposed second entrance into Frisco Ridge neighborhood is. So that's one thing that I believe the city should take into great consideration is the amount of traffic that's going to be viable to come straight into our neighborhood and use our streets to bypass anything that's here all the way down through sixty-six to the over there to the east.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Sir?
There's a major concern in our subdivision of coming off of I forty and coming directly into our neighborhood. And so that you could come off of Frisco Ridge, come up Vandement and directly into our subdivision. Is that the prime hearing? There's going to be a.
It's off of Vandement, I forty will not have direct access into your neighborhood.
Well, I forty, you'll come right down Frisco Road, come east into Vandement and then right into our subdivision. That, that's a concern. We don't really want that second entrance into our subdivision.
We had had several. You want to come up here and where is Mr. Horton's?
Well, the second entrance is required by fire code. I mean, there's enough houses there that absolutely have to have a second.
That was my question when I went to planning commissions is why, why, you know, we have to have two.
Yeah, the fire code requires that.
Okay. Then I, is that what you're going to? Okay. That's all we need to say there.
Can it be moved further to the north? I mean, not that that would satisfy. Okay.
That'd be the only place that it looks like, yeah. Because that was one of my questions is with the meat fire code. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. So a motion, any further discussion from the council?
My question is, because what I've heard from most people is why the need for C five? Why, why go from here to here? Can you help me understand that?
Well, the main thing, if you hold up that map, please, sir.
Because we. I want to see.
Sure, yeah. If you want to explain to Phil the access, where the access from I forty will be and people talk about where the major commercial will be. Well, no, the, sure, it's a curve that comes off there just to this, to the south of that property that's being rezoned. You're on Vandement right now. But this won't have anything to do to Vandement. If you have where the access from I forty will come up on Frisco Road.
Comes up south of there.
This is the major area, if you're looking for a hotel, they like access to I forty. That's why C five is important. They will not be building hotels way up to the north because first of all, people don't drive that far off the access. They like quick access to it and that is a major location for that type of zoning.
But we did C five on that top one.
Right, and that is, I understand.
Right.
But I'm just saying that is the major area if you want a hotel from a city standpoint.
So we do kind of know what's going to go.
That's where it's going to be, yeah.
So a hotel will probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
The city was required to relocate Vandement that part to the north.
My map is real small. What is this?
Water tower.
It's a water tower?
My map's so small, I can't see it.
Any further discussion?
When you mentioned fire code for the second entrance on that, what are, what's the statistics on what the fire code is? Because you have, you have two other platted neighborhoods in this area that only have single entrance. And so is there a proximity or a number of houses per entrance that was done? And that's why this, our neighborhood is going to require the second entrance straight off of Vandement?
Well, the fire, fire code requires two entrances. What, if you have something that has happened in the past, you know, we can't necessarily go back and redo everything that has been done in the past.
The, if you would go, and you're quite familiar with Frisco Ridge, there was such a fight on the council years ago when it was developed, not allowing the people from the south to go into. It originally planned to have a second entrance, that's why it's blocked off to the south of yours and to the north of the previous subdivision.
I understand, is there a point to that?
Is there a point to it?
Yes.
Yeah, the point was is that the original, that would have a second entrance coming out of that subdivision you're talking about had the people not blocked off that, such a fight be made that you didn't want them to go into their neighborhood.
So those two small pieces of?
That was to be, that was to have been a connected street originally, I believe, isn't that right?
So why can't that, why can't that connection be made so that we don't have to deal with the commercialization of entrance near our neighborhood? Because it's, it's about, I don't know, twenty square feet that would have to be done instead of adding in that entire road and access from Vandement?
Again, I might want to debate that, but there's people out here shaking their head, no, they don't want those people coming in right now and this could go on and on, but this was, you really, Mr. Horton, there's a certain number of houses that usually they require a second entrance to a subdivision. And.
So until we have that specific number that there is, do you feel like that this should be tabled so that the fire, the primary can come back and say specifically what the house ratio is for entrances that are needed?
No, no, no.
Is there, is there a, is there a number in that code?
If you let Mr. Horton come forward and talk, I would appreciate it.
I don't have the number in front of me, but we did look at that and it does exceed the number. The fire marshal looked at it or the fire inspector and he recommended that we have two entrances to that.
Okay.
So.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason that the entrance at the end of Branch Line couldn't be open so that could be a second fire entrance?
I don't think that's what we're here for to discuss tonight.
Well, it is because we're talking about having a second entrance off of I forty into Vandement. So we are talking about that. Instead of having that entrance off of Vandement.
Yes.
Could we not have that entrance and open up the street at the end of Branch Line for a second fire entrance? That's my question.
I mean, the discussion they're having is a plating issue and that plat was approved already by this council at the last meeting. So that issue's already been addressed and approved. Talking about zoning and not plating and street connections because that, that's actually under construction right now.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else from the council? Vote please.
Smaestra? Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes. Item six A, consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance one three seven five. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
Second.
Who is the second, please?
Maybe on my right.
Thank you. And any further discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Item seven, consider approving ordinance one three seven six and ordinance amending ordinance number six five seven, appendix A of the code of ordinances of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for being a part of a tract of land situated within a portion of the southwest quarter of section nineteen township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian in Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed from C three restricted commercial, R two combined residential district, R three multifamily residential district and I one light industrial to C five automotive, commercial, recreation district, Frisco Commercial District, Track Three and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion accept.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Sure, I'm glad you brought that map tonight.
Once again, just to show everybody the track we're discussing. One change we have made since planning commission was we've agreed to increase the landscape buffer to a hundred feet from twenty-five along the existing residential and the commercial. At planning commission, it was a twenty-five foot landscape buffer.
And the buffer to the north on that property is how big?
I'm sorry, the pond?
The buffer to the north.
The buffer to the north is a hundred and sixty-five feet and there's already a detention pond that has been constructed along there. So there won't be any structure.
Is there one detention pond or two there?
There's a pond, one pond here, there's a pond here and a pond here and there's going to be a future pond in this corner.
If it's required, is that it?
That one will, we, we know that will be required and we're, we're already discussing with the city doing some improvements to that corner. Prior to any development.
Did you turn that so everyone, is everyone back there seeing it all?
So there's existing pond constructed here. This is a proposed pond in that corner where that goes down that stub. Sorry, there's a pond here, here and here and this will be a future pond.
Why would we not propose a C three that abuts Westport, which makes more sense for the property owners, in my opinion? And then zone possibly the rest of it C five?
If you want to address that? I mean, that's we're trying to leave it open for as many possibilities. I mean, this is going to be a very, you know, desirable commercial area and really not knowing, you know, it may be a large hotel that goes there and if we do anything besides C five, we take the hotel out of just the discussion of that entire track.
The chances are they're not going to want to put a hotel back against the buffers in the back.
Correct. Yes. And if they do, there's additional setbacks. For every foot of height, you got to be a foot away from the property line, I believe. So in addition to the hundred foot, it's going to be, you know, a substantial setback from there.
Thank you, sir.
What about the maintenance of that, between that, the residents in that buffer?
It will be maintained by the property owner association.
Because I know a lot of the residents have expressed that they've been maintaining property outside their own property line.
Yeah. Once it's developed, it'll be maintained by the property owner association that'll take care of all the parking lot streets, landscaping.
Is there a plan for a property owners association within that entire tract already or? I want to know who, who it is.
Kip Ryan for the developer, generally those CCNRs or restrictions are placed upon at the time of plating site plan. So, no, there's not because we don't really know, we may end up having two or three in an area like that. So we have not set those guidelines and restrictions up yet. A lot of times in this city, you do a PUD and you got more specific detail. Then all of a sudden, you can start talking about setbacks that are different from the city ordinance and those types of things. That's generally when that's related. But we can put an easement in there, we can place something for the city. We will not go in and put landscaping in until we can get irrigation, until it's designed for that. But we can protect a certain level of trees, we can have certain plantings so many feet apart. That is generally something that happens, once again, at site plan or at a different point. This is just generally a zoning discussion. But yes, all that can be facilitated. And it will be on the minutes here, so we're committed to that.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any further discussion?
The green buffer zone that they have on the detention ponds, I think the landscaping buffer should extend past the detention pond so that way the detention ponds aren't just the only buffer on that area that abuts directly to that residential area on any of that, the two different neighborhoods that that abuts to.
But that, that would come as a direct result though of when they, they do the planning for that, is that not correct in the PUD? Is that where that would occur? Or site plan when they put that in?
So that green zone would move further up towards I forty, further south, is what you're saying?
No, that'd be incorrect, I mean, there's going to be screening along there. At least these folks will not be looking.
Right.
It's a solid site proof.
And so this is the hundred and sixty-five feet that you spoke of, correct? To the end of that. Well, why doesn't, and the current land usage that goes back here behind the established areas here, this is currently C three that butts up to that neighborhood. So I don't see why, as Councilwoman Yanda brought up earlier, why that's not the same, that's land usage during the zoning commission. Because that's what it was done here for the storage.
There's actually several in there, there's industrial in there as well.
On this side, yes, there is light industrial, but what the, that butts up against the existing thing that's right here, that's not shown on this map, about right where that creek line is, is, is zoned C three if there were ever to be future use.
That's in here, that's mixed, R two, C threes, R three and, and I, industrial as well. So we're changing quite a few things there, so.
In, in Track Three, yeah.
Yes, sir.
But what's not on this and is already in the city's land usage is about from here back towards the neighborhood where it abuts to the neighborhood right here, Westport, is land usage is already zoned as C three. So that, that would be carrying on the same uh, you would call as putting in a rainbow of C three against all of the neighborhood additions. And then anything that's in this green area, this hundred and sixty-five feet basically just comes to the end of that retention pond. So there needs to be more area of landscaping that can be done past that in the zoning.
Handled as a part of the development of the area as opposed to us rezoning that area right now. To, yeah. Many storage area down there in the back.
And there's no plans to open up any of the streets out of Westport, additional streets on the Vandement?
There is one industrial type street that's up there. This is, this, there's a line, I don't know if it would be, there's going to be plenty of access off the way. There's this living drainway that was out of the many stores across the property that would have been required. Drain crossing. I don't see all the traffic through there.
Thank you, sir.
And all of that would appear back before the council in a PUD or whatever development anybody plans.
Okay. I have a motion and a second.
We have a couple more that want to speak.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Suzanne Heggie, seven twenty Chateau Avenue. First, let me say I appreciate several of the neighbors met with Mr. McCarron, Ms. Yanda, Jim Crosby, spoken to Ms. Selby and I appreciate the, and the developer, listening to our concerns which resulted in the increased buffer amount. My only concern is that, like Councilwoman Yanda said, I don't know why we have the need to go from C three and the other smaller zoning areas to C five. Um, could I see your map for a second? If I understood what you were saying, you were saying that this area would probably be where a hotel would go in, is that correct?
No.
This year?
More than likely, yeah, I mean, if that's, they don't have anything.
Right. We, we don't have anything in stone, but that would be the ideal location for it if we were to choose. Okay. So the. So the question that I have as a homeowner here is why this track can't be split. Part of it's C five that's closer to the highway exit, and the rest of it remains C three. In our discussions, we had issues concerning drainage, and I know that is being addressed, and we appreciate that, because everyone's aware that we have a lot of water issues in that area. The other question we had was about our buffer, and we, it's our understanding that the berm that exists currently there will remain there and will not be destroyed. We appreciate that also. We understand that there'll be a PUD and that, that the specifics concerning the development itself will be up for discussion. So my only concern still is why we go from C three, R one, R two, and I, I one, I think it is, straight up to C five, and why that property section cannot, cannot be divided and zoned partially like the other one was. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? Yes, sir.
Rick Opitz, seventeen seventy-seven West Vandy, Yukon, Oklahoma. I'm one of the owners and developers, and I just want everybody to know that we want to do what's good for Yukon. That's our sole intent, is to do what's good for Yukon. Yukon will not let me build a hotel next to a house. They just won't let me do it. They have certain ordinances and setbacks, different things you got to do. So in rezoning this, what we do, we get to encourage people to come to Yukon, to look at the land and see it zoned. They may not need it zoned C five, but then again, they may need it zoned C five. But if you start at C five, we can go down to C three, or go down if we need to. So our intent is to help everybody in Yukon. To give you, for example, behind my home in Stone Creek, behind my fence is C four. The city of Yukon is not going to let somebody build a hotel or anything like that behind my house. It's just not, they're just not going to let you do that. You have to have certain buffers, and you have to set aside so far. So we just want to do what's right for Yukon. That's our full intent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Walters. I live at seven oh four Villa Avenue in Westport. My home directly behind it is R two. I attended the meeting on October twenty-second regarding the changes that were to be made or are going to be made. I applaud those. I did owe Mrs. Heggie and everything that she said. I'm very appreciative of the sitting meeting with us, the developers, and the changes that they're going to make. My concern at that meeting, one of the developers said that there needs to be some give and take. Land was donated for a water tower. They were allowed to use access to extend Vandy through the property. That could have been done by eminent domain, and I feel like when gifts are given, gifts are given with no strings attached. And I feel like taking it to a C five, that's like a dog on a leash. You're letting that dog have as much as you want, as far out as it may be, and it's real tough to reel that back in, you know, again, like a blank check. And I think, I would hope that you all would consider a C three if we needed C five later, so be it. Let there be some type of planning, you know, meet with the planning commission, but I really feel like, once you have that leash out at a C five, and you've advertised, and you're not willing to embrace any type of business that may want to come in at a C five, you may be sending a bad message, and I just feel like you really need to keep it at a C three, and then if you need to extend that leash later and open it, if the council believes so or the planning commission, do it. But I feel like C five is too much, too fast for homes that back up, or that are, currently have R two behind them. C five is much too great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We need to vote.
Kachini?
I have a problem with this whole thing, is that I cannot understand why the planning commission didn't do diligence in getting everybody to sign off on this. And it looks like we're fighting our own people and our own residents, and I'm not even part of that area, I'm off on the other side, but yet I'm getting these phone calls about it. I just don't understand what the planning commission is doing. I'm going to say no.
Yanda?
No.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
McCarron?
Yes. Makes item seven A moot? Item eight, consider approving a preliminary plat of Frisco Commercial. A part of the west half of section nineteen, township twelve north, range five west, Indian Meridian, Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for tracks one, two, and three, south of Highway sixty-six, and west of Frisco Road, with conditions as recommended by the planning
Make a motion accept.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we may, we may have a typo in that ordinance.
Is it, I don't, how does it wind up west of Frisco Road?
Yeah, it's the west half of section nineteen for the township. It's, it's talking about tracks one, two, and three, where track one has been split into two tracks now, which would be one A, C three, and probably what would be one B for the C five area. So one of those tracks has already been the C five part, or the C three part has already been tabled indefinitely until it goes back to the planning commission. Track one that was just voted down also needs to go back to the planning commission. So I ask that the city council move on agenda item number eight to re-meet with the planning commission as to the other two items that have also been moved back to the planning commission for this track, for this number eight as well.
With the existing zoning, the tracks are still valid, so we, and planning commission recommended approval, so we ask that you, ask for your approval on the preliminary plat.
Show me on the map again there, make sure I'm clear here. All three of them, right?
It's just a plat of the, of the three or four tracks. It's a preliminary plat, not a final plat, conceptual of what that looks like.
What they're wanting is to go back to the table and replat that one into several.
We're talking, they're talking zoning, we're talking plating.
Right, but they're wanting to separate it?
No.
No?
No, we're, the preliminary plat is just this large track, this large track, and this large track. That, that's it. And what's shown on it, and what is the buffers, and that's what.
It has nothing to do with the zoning.
Yeah, separate from zoning, even with the current zoning, as it is without the approved zoning, it's still a valid preliminary plat. And with that, you still get the buffers, and the zoning will be an issue that'll be reheared by planning.
The plants approved, whatever is presently zoned, no matter what, unless you, council approved a change, but if we didn't approve a change on it, that plat would still be good on what's in existence.
Correct.
Existence at this time.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Would you please come up? I'm sorry.
Come up to the microphone, speak.
Mason Hensley, seven hundred Chateau. So you're saying that on, on here, just a question for you. You're basically, you guys made some changes in concession when we met, and that's what you're saying, you wanted to plat, is your changes to your preliminary plat that you saying the first time, this will be to kind of finalize those, those buffer areas and things like that. It's not changing anything with the zoning, it's just, this is the areas we're going to develop, this is the buffers that we're going to have in here, and this is where the detention ponds are at.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Without the preliminary plat, I mean, you can't tie buffers to straight zoning. So without the preliminary plat, the buffers go away. And with the preliminary plat, no one can do anything with that property unless they bring a new preliminary plat in front of you. So we're just asking to go ahead and have the preliminary with the buffers approved, and then we'll revisit the zoning at planning commission.
Any further discussion? Jermaine here?
Yes. So the preliminary plat is basically, is the blueprint of what the land is going to be. So once you go through all of those engineering documents to approve the blueprint for the plaits, there's no going back. So once these preliminary plaits are approved, you only move forward with changing things within those preliminary approved plaits. So that's like saying, I want to design a tire that does this, but then when you design it, and it doesn't end up doing what you want it to do, you want to go back and revise that. So these preliminary plaits that you approved tonight will not be able to be revised backward to change anything. They will only go forward with changing things, because the plat is the blueprint of what's the land is going to be shaped and used for, is the preliminary plat that is on number eight.
When the final plaits come forward, they will be breaking that down into various sections and what have you. It has nothing to do with what you're talking about. You, you will go forward, that's correct, because you're not going to come in and plat all those acres at one time. This will have to be cut down to smaller areas, nobody developed that big an area. They will then come in, and you will, with a PUD, or usually that's what everybody's dealing with on today's planning, and you will have, you'll talk about setbacks, you'll talk about drainage, you'll talk about how many lots are going to be within that final plat. The whole development will be there, what kind of trees you're going to have.
Correct. But when they review our final plat, we'll be adding a lot more detail, but they will pull that preliminary plat out and make sure what was committed to on the preliminary plat when it comes to buffers and everything else is held to on the final plaits. So the final plat, yes, there'll be a lot more detail, that's when we submit the engineering plans, that's when you're going to get easements, that's when, and then, a lot of times with that's when you actually get the site plans for the specific, you know, building, parking, all that. But right now, it's just a preliminary plat, large tracks, and we're committing to the setbacks.
Sure.
So why would you need a preliminary plat on something that the committee just voted no on?
It gives them.
For that area.
It gives them the bones to start with, I believe that's correct. That's what we're saying, isn't it? And it's not a final plat, which also comes before both the planning commission and the council before their approval finally.
So the, the track three still has to go back to the planning commission, is what you got voted down?
That's correct.
But you're still, right now, you're asking for three approvals on three preliminary plaits. So the only one that it should have a preliminary plat tonight is track two that didn't have any, any issues with it at all?
The plat goes forward as it is. The zoning that's there now, if it was agriculture, remains agriculture. But it locks in the setbacks that the guys talked about, it locks in the hundred foot, the hundred and sixty foot, the drainage, all that is locked in, and they cannot change it. They can expand it, but they can't change that. Zoning has nothing to do with this plat.
I understand that, sir.
And the plating will have to, and the zoning will, even with this, if they want to go, they will go back to the planning commission on those tracks of land and bring it to them and debate it again, and the public will be there and back here at another time to talk about the zone.
Right, so that's why track one's preliminary plat should not be approved, because it's going back to the planning commission. Track two's plat should not be approved, because it's going back to the planning commission.
No.
I'm talking about the plaits, sir, not the zoning, the plaits.
The plat can go forward as now without any problems whatsoever.
In your humble opinion?
In my humble opinion, it happens right.
Thank you. Single further discussion? Vote please. Selby?
Yes.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron? Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item nine, consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the city of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, for the purpose of electing one council member at large for a four-year term ending in May of two thousand twenty-three, and setting the filing period for the election. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, vote please. Yanda?
Yes.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron? Yes. Item ten, consider approving resolution two thousand eighteen dash fifteen, a resolution to execute the agreement establishing the Oklahoma Municipal Management Services, CMAO, and this is a every-year thing that we do with the City Management Association, so do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please. McCarron? Yes. Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider an approved resolution number two thousand eighteen dash sixteen, a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Yukon Municipal Authority, known as the Authority, issuing its two thousand eighteen A revenue note in favor of YNB in a aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of police vehicles and related equipment, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing said revenue note to be sold at a price less than par value by negotiated sale within the limits provided by Title sixty Oklahoma statutes, section one seven six, authorizing and approving a sales tax agreement, providing security for the revenue note, designating the revenue note as qualified tax exempt obligations as contained in the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six, providing that the trust indenture shall be subject to provisions of the revenue note, ratification of lease agreement, and operation and maintenance contract between the city and the authority, and agreeing that the term of the lease shall extend so long as the revenue note remains unpaid, and the authorization of documents and procedures related to the issuance of the revenue note. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
To approve, Mr.?
It's actually the next one.
You read the next one, okay.
Number twelve.
Number twelve. All right. Any?
So earlier we talked about waiving competitive bidding?
That's correct.
Do you already have a sales source justification with who your vendors are that provide the best price?
Done by state contract.
So like a GSA schedule that you buy off of that the state has an agreement with?
Each year, the state goes out for bids. Can I get bids on everything? And that becomes the state contract. All municipalities, all counties, as well as the state can then buy off of that contract, because it's already gone out for competitive bid.
So you don't feel like the city should go out and compete and see if they can get better price from the competition?
It's not a matter of what I think the city ought to do, it's following the law. The law says they can do this. They can buy off the state contract without competitive bidding, because the states are
already done the competitive bidding.
Normally, if the state buys and bids, and you, we buy fourteen cars right now off the state contract, more buys cars, Oklahoma City buys hundreds and something cars, all those come off, so when the state's bidding, they're bidding for thousands of items, where we're bidding for fourteen, are you gonna get it cheaper if you buy a thousand, or are you gonna get it cheaper if you buy ten? The state has normally been a lot cheaper, always, and this is what cities have been allowed to do in counties, is to buy off the state contract. It's a common practice throughout. We buy trash trucks, we buy certain things, if it's not on state contract, we then go out for bids ourselves. But there's several agencies we look at, and I just take, that we're allowed to buy off of because of the quantity they buy, it's normally a lot cheaper than if we went out and bought on our own.
So you do buy these directly from the state?
We buy them off the state contract, but who bids it will, Ford will have a dealer, Chevrolet will have a dealer that handles state contracts, and we will get those through that dealer.
So why ask for waiving then, if it's, if you could go and...
I don't understand the question.
Well, you're, you're asking for something to be waived, so, obviously, there's a rule somewhere that says that there needs to be a competition that goes on. Now, if the state had a competition, and that's already happened, then the state had a competition, the city did not have a competition. Now, I understand buying from the state's contracts, where they went out and they did all their competitive analysis and everything from it, so, basically, what this is saying is, is the city of Yukon wants to waive competitive bidding rights, so no other companies have an opportunity to bid, you know, say there's a small mom pop shop that has fourteen cars that they wanna sell you, that they don't, or a dealership has fourteen of that same year that they wanna sell you for cheaper than what the state contract has. You're asking to waive that right in this thing. I just wanna make sure I have that understood correctly.
We're asking to waive competitive bidding, so it can, those items can be purchased off the state contract. As opposed to doing a competitive bid.
Okay, more competition, the better.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Consider and approve ordinance number 1377, an ordinance amending Section 2-137B of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon by determining that certain obligations, including the Municipal Authority 2018A revenue note in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $800,000, do not exceed debt limitations, repealing all conflicting ordinance provisions, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, second, Mr. Williams, you're on.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the item that we read, and I will read it with your permission, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, Section One, the Ordinate, the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon is hereby amended by amending the existing language of Section 2-137B, which new Section 2-137B is set out in its entirety below to it. The following bonds and indebtednesses are conclusively determined to be within and not to exceed the limitations of Section 2-137A, or any debt limitations of the Code of Ordinances or the Charter of the city, and any conflicting provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the city are modified to the extent necessary to fully validate the following. Number one, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue and Refunding Bonds, Series 2012, in the aggregate principal amount of $6,500,000. Item two, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax and Utility System Revenue and Refunding Bonds, Series 2013, in the aggregate principal amount of $8,500,000. Item three, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, Series 2015A, in the aggregate principal amount of $9,520,000. Item four, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, Series 2015B, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,805,000. Item five, Yukon Municipal Authority 2017 Revenue Note, in the aggregate principal amount of $380,000. Item six, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, Series 2017, in the aggregate principal amount of $10,000,000. Item seven, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, Series 2017B, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,840,000. Item eight, Yukon Municipal Authority 2018 Revenue Note, in the aggregate principal amount of $825,000. Item nine, Yukon Municipal Authority Sales Tax Revenue Note, Series 2018, in the aggregate principal amount of $5,675,000. And item ten, Yukon Municipal Authority 2018A Revenue Note, in the aggregate principal amount of $800,000. And incidentally, the only item that changes from the existing language of the code is this last item, the $800,000 loan that we're doing tonight, all the rest are indebtednesses that were entered into years ago in many cases. Item two, section, uh, Section Two, repeal or all provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon, which are inconsistent with the following, are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, it being intended that the foregoing ordinance shall supersede and modify any conflicting provisions contained in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Yukon. Section Three, emergency, whereby it is necessary for the immediate preservation of peace, health, and safety of the citizens and residents of the city of Yukon, Oklahoma, that the foregoing ordinance be enacted, and that the provisions of this ordinance become immediately effective, and emergencies hereby declared exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval as provided by law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion? Okay, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 12A, consider and approve the emergency clause of Ordinance 1377.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item thirteen, consider approving the purchase of a transfer trailer for the sanitation department in the amount of $80,680 from Southwest Trailers, Inc., per state contract, SW198, as budgeted in the capital improvements and as recommended by the Public Works Director. Arnold, you wanna just tell us you get, what you're getting there, this? I know your, your old ones are...
Uh, the old ones were purchased in 2005. This, we have three of these trailers, these are the trailers that haul the sanitation from the transfer station to the landfill. We make about, average about five trips a day.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions along? Okay, seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, yeah, I'm sorry.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, we just had some discussion, so vote please.
Selby?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item fourteen, consider approving the expenditure funds to Brewer Construction, Oklahoma, LLC, for the repair of the sanitary sewer at 224 West Mead, in the amount of $12,650.40 to be paid from the capital improvements as part of the 2017 concrete and asphalt paving drainage, water, and sewer project contract, as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept.
Second.
A motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Consider a motion, item fifteen, consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council convenes into executive session concerning pending litigation, as provided for in 25OS 2003, Section 307B4. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept. Second.
And... Who all, I know the council is gonna step, Jim, do you, who all's gonna join us on this? Is this the, our counselor?
It's counselor and Tammy.
And, uh, Mr. Spain and yourself, okay? So we have a, uh, did we, we voted on that?
Voted.
Huh? We have not voted. All right, vote please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the council will be, uh, going into executive session for a short period of time, and then we will come back out and get the conclusion of that.
Jim, do you want me to go take notes? Yes. Yes. Take that?
Oop, I'm sorry. I know you do. No, it's, I have to.
The gift, the cheese gift.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Consider a motion to adjourn from executive session, and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
And... This is where you read the, oh, okay. I would like not, I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Okay, uh... So we're, so we need to vote, please. Yes, sir.
Smystola?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Okay, item seventeen, enter into a contract for professional services with the Love Law Firm for legal services. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Item eighteen, new business, is there any new business, Mr.?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council discussion. Ms. Yanda?
Well, I just wanna thank everyone for being here, and I think we value your opinions and your concerns, and I think if we all work together, that we'll do what's best for the city of Yukon as we move forward. Certainly, any concerns or questions you have, please contact one of the council members, we'd be happy to visit with you. And also, I wanna thank Mitch Hoskins for his many years of service to the city of Yukon. Thank you.
Councilwoman Smystola?
Are you gonna discuss Christmas coming up, the Christmas opening?
I, I think that's on my...
Okay, never mind.
Huh?
That's all I... Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Councilwoman Kachini?
I would, I wanted to thank the Yukon residents and also the city of Yukon for assisting me in supporting the film crew that was in Yukon, Oklahoma, filming a movie. Thanks to them, they finally completed and out of our hair. It was a tough one. I just still don't know who put me up for that one. I'd also like to announce that, uh, Tom Thomas, my deputy at the museum, has been selected as our designate knee, as the veteran of our community in the El Reno Parade. He'll be honored on 11 November at 3:00 PM in the parade. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selby?
I, I reiterate what Ms. Yanda said, and everything that we hear from you, please know, we do not take that lightly, and know that when we vote, it is with a lot of, a lot of concern, a lot of thought, and what is best for our community. And I thank everybody who went out to vote today, and the results are coming in, and hopefully, we'll have a new governor here in just a little while. Make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another.
Uh, for my part this evening, I'd also like to thank Mitch, he's someone who has given 25 years of his life to the city of Yukon. Uh, he's, uh, one of those good folks that you can go to and talk to, and, and that sort of thing, and so, I wish him very, uh, very well, isn't a very good way to say that. Anyway, I wish him well in retirement, and hope that, uh, he goes well. As Shelley indicated, uh, election results tonight for all of the national elections. Uh, ongoing, uh, Tennis Santa's Toy Shop, uh, has begun, so you can start dropping off toys for this Christmas. For those of you who are not familiar with the toy shop, we give away a lot of toys every year to, uh, underprivileged folks. I've had the pleasure of working there, and, uh, it'll occur on the 15th of December this year, so it's a really worthwhile thing, and one of the things that makes Yukon a great place to be. Reserved, uh, Sounds of the Season tickets go on sale for $10 on Thursday, November the 15th, on Friday, November the 16th, uh, all Sounds of the Season tickets will be on sale at that time. Uh, reserved tickets are only on sale at the Dale Robertson Center from the 16th on. The Community Coffee will be at the Maple City Library, uh, this weekend, and, uh, this Saturday, November the 17th, uh, we will have Opening of Christmas in the Park. People come from all over, uh, the entire state, really, to see the lights and the shows that we put on here, and brings a lot to our community, not only from the standpoint of recognition, but it certainly, uh, helps in our, uh, recognition of Yukon as an outstanding community, uh, here. And, uh, and, uh, Chisholm Trail Park has quite a few things going on, the Mascot Dash and the Chill Your Cheeks Run, the Jingle Walk, the Chris Carnival, uh, Christmas in the Park, uh, light, of course, is, is on, and it starts at 6:00 PM in the evening. Uh, and the Yukon Santa Express will begin its first, uh, run, and runs nightly, weather, weather permitting. And with that, seeing no other business before the council this evening, this meeting is adjourned.